The order and pledge. We're gonna go. All right. Thank you. I apologize, everyone, for the delay. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Pecosin Planning Commission meeting for Monday, November 7th. We're going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then after that, if you would like to join us for the Lord's Prayer for invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By kingdom come, that will be done on earth.
Beg your daily bread, forgive us our trespasses.
Okay, I'm going to be slow-rolling this for just a moment. We do have one more commissioner coming that will help us make a quorum. Until that other commissioner is here, we cannot technically approve any of the minutes or do any of the agenda items. So if one wants to just be patient, she'll be walking in any minute, and then we will proceed with the agenda.
Parking lots getting ready for the.
I will make the announcement that we do have two public hearings this evening. Oh, okay, that's great. I'll just talk into an empty. Thank you, that's good. Oh, I'm muted. All right, thank you so much. All right, we will go ahead and proceed with the agenda. An announcement ahead of time is we do have two public hearings this evening. Request for conditional use permit by Med Express Ambulance Service is on the agenda as a first item. Request for a conditional use permit by Graham Real Estate LLC for the operation of a mini-storage warehouse is the second item. We are going to go ahead and switch those. So we are going to have a public hearing for the mini-storage warehouse first, followed by the conditional use permit by Med Express that will come after. With that being said, we have the first item of the agenda is the approval of minutes from the work session of October 17th and the regular session of October 17th. Do I have, is there a motion to approve those as written?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Gribble?
Stand.
Commissioner Salleck?
Aye.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye, but we don't have the proper votes to approve that.
Yeah, you have, sorry.
Three, okay, okay, great, thank you.
Chairwoman, the, sorry, the work session minutes are approved with a vote of three, three to zero with one abstention.
And how about the regular session? Is there a motion to approve those as written?
I'll make a motion to accept the regular session as written. Session.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Gribble?
Stand.
Commissioner Salleck?
Aye.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Chairwoman, the regular session minutes are approved with a vote of three to zero with one abstention.
Next on the item, on the agenda, we have an audience for visitors. This is for anyone to come up and speak their mind about any topic that is unrelated to the public hearings. The public hearings will have their own opportunity to address the commission. So does anybody have anything that they would like to address the commission for in general other than the public hearings? Yes, please. Mr. Fay.
Yeah, Keith Fay, Tin Wells Court, Central Precinct, which I also represent on the City Council. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to everybody that sits on the commission. Really appreciate your hard work here, and now you can't say that it's a thankless job because I just thanked you all because I know what it's like to get your space. It's hard to remember on certain nights to come out and attend these meetings. Second, we are aware that you're down to on the City Council, so we're working to get replacements for you as quickly as we can. And also, I do appreciate when I can't make one of these meetings in attendance, that you speak nicely into the microphones so we can hear it on the recording. So those are the three things I had, and again, thank you for serving on the commission.
Yes, I understand, especially the speaking into the microphone. I listen to a lot of the meetings, and it is very helpful. Thank you. Anyone else for the audience for visitors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the public hearing. The first one that we are going to have this evening is a request for a conditional use permit by Graham Real Estate LLC for the operation of a mini-storage warehouse to be located at Tax Map Parcels 18-1-103 and 18-1-104 on With Creek Road, Zoned B2 Business Commercial. Thomas, are you going to present that this evening?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. As the chairwoman just mentioned, the first we will hear tonight is a conditional use permit for a mini-storage warehouse to be located at Tax Map Parcels 18-Tac-1, Tac-103, and 18-Tac-1, Tac-104 on With Creek Road, Zoned B2 Business Commercial. The applicant is Graham Real Estate LLC, and the reason for the conditional use permit is that many storage facilities are not permitted by right in the B2 District and can only operate upon the issuance of a conditional use permit by City Council. This is the proposed site that I'm sure all of you are familiar with, the vacant parcel of land between the Moore Building and the post office. Again, Zone B2 Commercial. These are conceptual elevations, and I'll talk about those in a second because Architectural Review Board did consider them earlier this evening at 5:00. These are just more for general information than is necessarily your consideration. This front elevation is how you would see the building from With Creek Road, and besides a few minor conditions, this is what was approved by the ARB. And of course, site plan review and sign permitting will be completed by staff as normal. This is a conceptual site plan of the property, you know, of course, subject to change per staff review. There are seven recommended conditions, Madam Chair, and I'll read those to you. First is that all loading and unloading should take place on-site, and at no time shall be permitted on With Creek Road or in a manner which restricts the access of the sidewalk. You know, I think that's pretty, pretty easy to understand, but we don't want a situation where, you know, an 18-wheeler parks in the right lane of With Creek Road to unload somebody's house. We want to make sure it happens on-site. No outside storage should be permitted. You know, this is a mini-storage warehouse, and the storage should take place within that, you know, so that this is to avoid, you know, the leasing of a parking spot to a boat, trailer, anything of the like. The third condition is that, except for the purposes of loading and unloading, there should be no parking or storage of trucks, trailers, and moving vans. The fourth condition is that, as part of the applicant's site plan approval, all stormwater maintenance facilities shall be fenced and shall only be accessible for maintenance and landscaping services. This is something that council has conditioned in the past with facilities of this nature and would more than likely be required per the engineers anyways, but we want to make it explicitly clear. Fifth condition is that the use must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations. If at any time this use is operating in violation of any of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agencies, the City Council may revoke the permit. Sixth condition is that if at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, the permit shall become null and void. And the seventh is that City Council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. Staff is recommending approval of the application, Madam Chair. Your recommended approval of City Council with these conditions, and I am happy to answer any questions or address any parts of the staff memo that you may ask of me.
Anything you'd like to start?
I would like to ask a question. I was just looking here at the conceptual site plan. Has a preliminary site plan been presented?
That has not.
So, I mean, I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, is there enough turn radius for an 18-wheeler to even get in there and make that turn and do any kind of maneuvering within that area?
Well, Commissioner Gribble, I would keep in mind that it is conceptual in nature. I can speculate that the applicant's engineers will take that into consideration, and so will ours.
I have a question about the stormwater management. It was a little tricky to read in our packages. Do I see that there's going to be a pond along the side and then a pond along the front between the sidewalk and the parking lots?
That is correct. You know, again, I would note that it's a conceptual site plan, but that's an accurate reflection of what this one shows.
And again, I know this is conceptual, but there would be a fence basically between the sidewalk.
We're gonna require fencing around any of the stormwater management facilities. Yes, ma'am.
And what is the proposed height of the building?
From conversations with the applicant, again, we don't have a site plan or building plans, but to my understanding, the applicant will conform with the restrictions of the district and that the height will not exceed 35 feet.
And for reference, do you happen to know, and I should ask you this today, I apologize, I didn't ask this question in advance, what the height is of the Moore Building adjacent?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not. It's, it's, it would be a little tricky to determine existing buildings because of how height is measured, so I can't honestly give you an accurate guess of the Moore Building.
Well, I would say 35 feet will tower over either side of post office as well as the Moore Building, 35 feet.
I think that's an accurate assessment. Yes, ma'am.
And Thomas, something that you may be able to do now is just walk us through the setbacks along the perimeter. Would you mind doing that?
Okay, sure. I'll, I'll refer to the B2 code. I'll read any part of it you want me to. I have it handy. But basically, like I mentioned, the height restrictions are 35 feet, which is pretty common with our residential districts as well. At yards generally, there should be a side yard not less than 15 feet in width on the side of a lot adjoining a residential district, which this site only does, if I can direct your attention to the screen, that's the rear right corner. It is adjacent to one residential lot in the South Tanvilles, and the code continues to say that there should be a rear yard not less than 30 feet in depth on the rear side of a lot adjoining a residential district. So what I just pointed to shows that 30-foot setback.
Front's 30 foot?
The rear adjoining residential district is 30 feet.
And the front setback is what?
The setback lines in the B2 District are 80 feet from the center of the street right away, or no less than 50 feet from the edge of the street right away.
Lighting is gonna be back there behind where the residential, residential, what kind of exterior lighting, at a 24-hour lighting?
I can't speak to that. We haven't received a site plan, you know, a photometric plan that we talked about with the new site plan language, but, you know, we'll review it in accordance with the regulations, you know, that you all approved recently, and, you know, ensure there's no spell-over lighting. That may be something the applicant can speak to, but at this time, I can't.
Thomas, I know you said you can't comment on the Moore Building next, but what building in the city would be comparable to the height of this proposed one?
To be honest with you, you know, I think if you imagine the front of Taylor's Do-It, you know, where it is a little taller than the rest of the surrounding businesses, that may be accurate, but it would be hard to give me, for me to give you an accurate similarity.
There's no description that this would now be the tallest building in Pecosin?
It may be the case for the commercial district, you know, maybe with the exception of the Old Vector Building at the corner of With Creek and Carriage Chapel that I can think of off the top of my head. Wells Fargo is, is pretty tall as well. Right.
Talk to us about, are there buffer requirements or landscaping?
There are requirements in the B2 District, yes, ma'am. The code says that landscaping may be required within any established or required front setback area in the district. The plans and execution must take into consideration traffic hazards. Sufficiency areas should be provided to adequately screened permitted uses in the district from residential districts. And it goes on to speak about buffer zones, but I, again, would prefer, not necessarily that you have it in front of you, but I would refresh your memory on the site plan ordinance recently recommended for approval by you all two City Council, which was approved, and there are some, some pretty clear landscaping requirements in that, and we will ensure that the applicant adheres to all of this.
Buffers between this and the adjacent properties are not currently required but could be a condition?
I think you could, yes, ma'am. The applicant has, at least in the conceptual site plan, you could see it a little more clearly, and your handout has proposed that the buffers will be landscaped. And like I said, we'll require that in accordance with the site plan ordinance and the city code, which speaks to the B2 District in general.
Another thing that I'm concerned about on the Moore Building side, the Moore Building is basically built almost to the lot line because it was a pre-existing building, so it's practically on the line, if not right on the line. And so I'm looking at this, and you're saying a 15-foot setback, that's a really close building to that building.
I would note that that 15-foot side setback is only for lots adjoining residential districts, but I would, I would also refer to, you know, of course, it's a conceptual site plan, but the applicant does show a buffer around the site, a 10-foot buffer.
10-foot buffer of what?
A 10-foot landscape buffer.
A landscape buffer. And what type of landscaping? Are we talking about, you know, 10-foot hardwoods, or are we talking about?
Well, again, that would be something we would consider once the site plan is submitted. But back to the chairwoman's earlier question, I think the board could condition a landscape buffer, but it is shown, and like I say, the site plan ordinance does, does require it, and we as staff have the authority to require it, you know, in the B2 District generally. If you want to, I, I can read that to you, but primarily, it's for the front setbacks in the B2 District where we can require the landscape buffer zone.
Well, I want to go back to, to, to the access into this. I mean, I know this is just a rendition, but I'm familiar with this type of structure, and I just, that just looks like very small parking for such a large building, and maneuverability within that parking area looks very small to me compared to the size of that building.
I do sympathize with that concern, and, you know, my, quite honestly, unfamiliarity with buildings of the sort, I've, I've done a little research, and if this conceptual site plan is identical to what a preliminary would be, I could tell you that the parking would be adequate. The staff level is, I'll say, one and a half to two full-time staff members, which obviously won't require great amount of parking. These are pretty, these facilities are low traffic impact and typically are frequented, I'll say, not often by tenants. So I do think, I do think the parking would be adequate, but again, that's something we'll review once we receive a site plan.
Can you, like, maneuver in there and maneuver what you see right there, right now?
I couldn't give you an honest answer.
As they could?
It might be a question to ask the applicant. I'm sure they've taken that into consideration in their, in their site design.
Ratio, do you know, is that within?
I don't. Again, that would, that would be a number we would get.
A fairly big building for that site, I think.
Have you heard from any of the adjacent property owners?
I have not heard from any adjacent property owners, no, ma'am, and to include the residential district in the rear of it.
Questions for Thomas before we open it up for the public hearing?
So, Thomas, just to make, if I'm understanding correctly, the one property that this is really going to obstruct where they are now is the one white residential house directly in the rear. And then, does it really cross any of the townhomes?
I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm clear on what you mean by obstruct.
So you're putting a two sort of 35-foot building in front of, it looks to be a old store.
The building is not necessarily, again, conceptual site plan. Now, I would note that the parcel shown in red on the right side of the drawing is not part of the parcel, it's a separate, own parcel by the post office, and if you look just north of that in this picture, you'll see where the house actually is that this is adjacent to, and of that residential parcel, you know, the building is, is really behind its side and rear yard.
What feedback did the ARB have?
The ARB approved, the rendering as presented, the architectural features to include the signage and fencing with a few conditions. I can go over a few of those. May be hard to see, but I'll, I'll hit them swiftly. If you see, if you look along the top edge of the building, you'll see a change in materials, and that was originally presented as corrugated paneling. The ARB asked that that be changed to insulated paneling. It's, it's a larger panels that have a more textured appearance. They did, however, allow for corrugated to be placed on the rear of the building, and that the walls, interior of the windows invisible from With Creek Road should have a flat panel, basically, to give the appearance of an office building, and those were, those were the three conditions.
Questions for comments for Thomas? I'm sure we'll, we'll be asking you more.
Sure.
As the evening progresses.
Sure.
But at this time, I would like to hear from anybody who would like to address the commission as part of the public hearing. And if you could, please state your name and address.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Tim Tran. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Coffman &amp; Canel's. I live here in the city of Pecosin. My street address is 837 Pecosin Avenue. Also with me tonight is Whitney Graham, who's the owner and president of Graham Real Estate, who's the applicant in this case, and his contractor with him, who is Matt Hussin of Elevated Contractors, a native son of Pecosins, born and raised here, and does the construction work, will be the one doing the construction work on the building. Thank you for your time this evening. Just try to address a few questions you have, and before I get into that, want to thank Thomas and his team for their help in working through not only the conditional use permit process and the application, but also the ARB approval. It's been very helpful, very clear about what the ordinance requirements are, and looking, you know, very stern about wanting a quality project, but, but very fair and reasonable and helpful. So thank you, Thomas. Just to, for context, and I'm sure you all know this, but the zoning phase before applicants will typically, you know, can, can justify investing in final engineering, which is very expensive design, final design work. You work through. You work through the conceptual phase, which is the zoning phase, we call it. And so a lot of the detailed information that I know, you know, thoughtful people in reviewing requests like this want, isn't available because we're not at the, the final engineering phase, we're still at the conceptual phase. So we will do our best to, to try and address your questions, but as, as Mr. Canela indicated, we, we are not at, the, the engineering phase would only come if we were fortunate enough to receive approval from city council of, of the zoning of, of just the concept. That's how the process is set up. We will recommend and council approve sort of a concept and if the concept's okay, then we invest in the final engineering. In any event, real quick, just the benefits I see as a resident of Pecosin and certainly as a representative of the applicant is, it's an attractive addition to our commercial corridor. We haven't had a lot of investment in our commercial corridor in a long time and this, this will be, I think, a very nice addition to it. I'm hoping it'll be a catalyst for some reinvestment in our commercial corridor. It's low traffic generating, so you can imagine, you know, a lot of uses that would go there would generate more traffic than this one. Self-storage is historically very, very low traffic generating. We'll get into that in a minute when we talk about the parking question that was raised. It addresses a significant need in the area, not just, you know, in the immediate vicinity of Pecosin, but in the area for climate control, self-storage. Most of our self-storage that's available in the immediate vicinity is the older roll-up doors, not climate control. And this will also, as you might guess, be a very nice addition to our non-residential tax base, which the city desperately needs. In terms of the size of the building, it would be comparable and actually lower in height than we anticipate than the adjacent apartment buildings. The apartment buildings, I think, are probably the tallest buildings in the vicinity of this project and it will be slightly lower than that. Those are three-story garden-style walk-up apartments and this, this will not be as intrusive as those. And quite frankly, as a resident and commuter in that corridor, I don't, I find the apartments to fit, fit nicely within that, within that area, not, not at an intrusive height, 35 feet in the commercial corridor is actually pretty, pretty low rise. The size of the building is, is necessary in order to make the project feasible. And as you may know, we, we as, as residents of Pecosin have a very limited inventory of commercial land, so trying to maximize what we put on the land that we do have is important. And, and I would say this is a good example of this. We, not, not to punish the, the current applicant for, for the sins of his neighbors, but, you know, the Moore building is against the line, but notwithstanding that, we've tried to accommodate, so we've pushed our building as far north of the site as we can to allow more room. As you know, our building is not on the setback line, we're off the setback line to some, some degree. And the applicant is intending to landscape its buffer areas, not only in accordance with the ordinance, but to create the right aesthetic. I mean, they're, they're in a, it's a, it's a retail business and the more attractive the building is and the investment they make in its appearance will, will ensure that it has success with its customers. We are in agreement with all of the proposed conditions except one, and we don't wholly disagree with it, we just ask for one modification, if you would accommodate us. And that is condition number three, which deals with the prohibition on there being overnight parking or storage of trucks, trailers and moving vans. We certainly agree with the concept of that condition, that this is not intended, we're not intended to have a side business of renting U-Haul trucks, but as a part of the business model, part of the service that my, my storage brand, storage facilities utilize is one company-owned moving truck they keep on-site for the, for the use of their customers. So if you come and rent a space, they would generally lend to you the moving truck to, to bring your storage materials there. So just want to, if, if we could, my humble request and certainly wordsmithing is, I defer to you, but my idea would just be to put before that period a comma and something to the effect, except for one company-owned truck or company-owned vehicle would be our, our humble request. Last but not least, to address the parking issue, the act, the site is actually shown in, in order to meet, as Mr. Canela indicated, the, the parking requirements in the, in the city's ordinance. It's actually more parking than we would customarily propose. As, as Mr. Canela indicated, the, the good thing about these self-storage facilities is they're not highly trafficked. And so there's actually more parking than we think we need, but we, we are in compliance with the, the ordinance. You know, it's a balance, you know, you can certainly have more parking, but the more parking you have, the more stormwater runoff you have, right? And the more, you know, environmental impact that you have. So trying to be judicious in meeting the ordinance requirements, we think is prudent and to, to do more parking would only create more impervious cover, which is, we feel unnecessary and creates, you know, the unintended consequence of more environmental impacts. And then last but not least, about the, the 18 wheeler or moving truck, as Mr. Canela said, we intend to work with our engineers at the final design phase to see whether an 18 wheeler movement can be accommodated. If it can, the site will be designed to accommodate that, that movement into the site for an 18 wheeler. If it cannot, then it'll be prohibited in our leasing and we would not rent to folks that intend to utilize it with an 18, access it with an 18 wheeler. Any other questions I can answer?
That would be something that I would be very concerned about because we have 18 wheeler examples in the city and are often moved by 18 wheelers from one point to another. I would be concerned that, that this site would not accommodate, what I'm seeing right here, would not accommodate the movement of an 18 wheeler into that project at all. It, it just seems to me that the building to land ratio is very, very high and I, I don't know what the, if the city, is there a ordinance or anything on that or any kind of limitations?
Not, not in the B two district, no ma'am.
At the time though, I would think that would be a very, be a, I would think that would be a very limited occasion that would happen because most time somebody moving, particularly military, would be moving to a residence, particularly to a storage unit. It may be that they would rent a storage unit and put some of their items there, but logically they'd be moving to a residence. I thought.
I think that's clearly, I mean.
It would be an occasion, maybe an occasion.
It would be an occasional thing, but that's what I'm saying.
It would be a rare.
Yeah, but what you're seeing there would not accommodate that.
As, as Shriver indicated, it is very unusual for an 18 wheeler to, you know, to visit a self-storage facility. As you indicated, lots of residents, you know, in transit, particularly military residents, do utilize those 18 whee, moving trucks, as do, you know, lots of other residents, but they are typically moving house to house, not to a storage unit. They typically do not.
To other, to other storage developments here. And I don't, I don't know if they've had any big trouble with that and certainly one of them, the one behind Dr. Hunt's office, would be somewhat limited. I mean, that's a fairly large, like that ever coming up.
I've never seen.
Having a problem with it.
Their parking layout is very different though, than what you see.
I'm, I'm not so much worried about, about that, to be honest with you, because I think it would be a very occasion, but you're saying, and of course, we're still on a, a public hearing here, I understand, but you're kind of saying that if it would not accommodate an 18 wheeler, in other words, when you get in there and you, you're, you're involved in the actual, not just the conceptional as we are here dealing with. You would not have that. You would be restricting it.
Yeah, I mean, we are in the, the sales business, right? I mean, we're selling storage just like others are selling coffee or with, you know, or groceries or whatever it may be. And if we're, you know, if Farm Fresh were blocking traffic once a week, right, to get their trucks in and out or to accommodate their business, that wouldn't do a lot of good for their customer base. We're, we're no different. So when folks come in to lease a storage unit, I mean, and I'm not convinced, we are not convinced that it's not possible to accommodate an 18 wheeler on-site, but Mr. Grue, you may be exactly correct, that our engineers may say, hey, that's just not going to work. In which case, as we would have as a part of our sales protocol and our leasing, when folks come in to, to ask about renting a storage unit, we're already talking about what are your need, you know, part of the intake process anyway is about what are your needs, you know, are you just, do you have just too much stuff in your garage or are you moving? How, how do you intend to use it, how often? Because we're trying to get them in the right size unit, the right location for their unit, trying to help them figure out what they need. And in that conversation, if they are saying, well, look, I'm a military family, I'm, I'm, you know, going to be buying a house in this area, we've got an, an 18 wheeler that will be coming and we'll need to put, you know, half of it in there because we're going to be living in an apartment until we get in it, you know, then we would counsel them, that's not permitted. It, you know, if, if engineering proves out it, it's infeasible to have an 18 wheeler on-site, then we would counsel them, hey, look, you're, you're not going to be able to utilize this site. And, and that would be stipulated in the lease terms that they couldn't, you know, they couldn't access the site with an 18 wheeler.
I mean, it looks like to me, it's more of an industrial-type building, something that you would see not on your main thoroughfare coming through. I mean, it's such a massive building for that area as well as for that site. I just, I can envision driving by that on a daily basis and it looks like something in a industrial park or out of the way or not on your main thoroughfare that we're trying to create.
Thomas, do you have the, the street elevations? And beauty is certainly in the eye of the beholder, Mr. Grue, but in my humble opinion as a resident, if you're over 20 years, that's better looking than anything else I drive by when I drive on With Creek Road.
Pretty massive. I mean, I don't know of anything that massive in the city. Do you?
Does apartments rate decide?
Apartments.
That's different. Because they're three-story, I think, aren't they?
Yes, they are three-story.
Across the street. Behind the car wash?
Yes.
They're a three-story. But they're off the main road, they're not, you're not riding right beside them.
They're three-story with, with gable roofs too, so that's what make them taller.
Is there, following up on, on Libby's comment, the company does have a series of, what, half dozen, dozen of these facilities. Is there one that is currently in use and built that would be analogous to what you are proposing for Pecosin? Is there one that would be, that we could drive by and say, oh, yeah, this looks like it would be the concept?
Kimble Road in Chesapeake is, is one that Mr. Graham indicates would be.
That's, that's a larger, it's a larger facility. This is, is smaller and also smaller in height.
He's indicating, just for the viewing audience, that the Kempville facility is larger in scale, both in height and size of the building, so it's, it's not, this is a smaller building, smaller footprint than, than the Kempville facility, but that's an example of sort of the quality of architecture.
So there's nothing on the peninsula side?
Newport News, but the Newport News isn't analogous to this one, right? The Newport News has more.
Newport is.
Out of warehouse.
Are you, yeah, are you speaking of the facility in, in Moore, off the workload?
Yes.
Yeah, that was actually an older, and we got, have gotten a lot of kudos for that building. It was an older, pretty ratty-looking self-storage facility and we came in and, and did a complete renovation of that facility, facade, you know, facelift of it. It is, it is still based on an older model of roll-up doors. It's not complex, it's not internal climate-controlled self-storage, which is sort of the modern, you know, desire, design for self-storage facilities. So I, I don't know that that's, that would be apples to oranges to this building would be my response, I guess.
I know this is a different type of storage than what is behind Dr. Hunt's.
It is.
They have a very pretty facade across the front of offices that pretty much hide the, the storage facility themselves, so it's very different, but in my opinion, it is too massive a building. It, it looks like an industrial building that I would see in an industrial park or back off the road behind something. I think it's too massive with Creek Road.
It's just a nice office building that I'd go to work at every day, but you must, you must work at a nicer place than I do, I'm sorry. But in any event, you know, the, the model for climate-controlled self-storage, and there's, you know, one beautiful examples all, all over Virginia and points beyond, is to have these look very much like an office, you know, retail center. And, you know, again, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but these are, this is what, you know, that, that would look like. We have a, a pretty eclectic commercial corridor, so to have a, somebody come in and make a business investment like this is pretty significant for our tax base. That parcel's been vacant for a long, long time and if this project were not to go forward and, and without the scale of this building, the use is infeasible on-site and shrink the building, but, but the, the numbers don't work. The cost of land, the cost of construction, you don't get the scale, you don't get the revenue, it just, it's not economically feasible.
Has the site been purchased yet?
No, it is under contract.
Subject to it.
It would sit for a long, long time and I would humbly ask for your consideration of some investment in that corridor and, and the hopes that it would encourage some reinvestment and further investment in that corridor.
Speaking of the tax revenue, I had called the Office of the Commissioner of the Revenue. I am not as business savvy as you all, but he basically explained that we wouldn't get, and I might be saying all of this wrong, but we wouldn't be getting income from business licenses since it's essentially rentals, but it would be taxed on the equipment, like the printers and, and things like that. Does that sound?
So the primary tax revenue, which, which I'm thinking of, and I'm sorry Whitney, but I'm anxious to get from, get from you as a resident of the city, is the, the real estate tax, right? I mean, it's taxed now as a piece of, a piece of raw ground. The, it'd be a significant capital investment in, in the construction of that building, the improvement, there is no improvement, you know, your, your home, for example, is taxed based on land improvements, right? And it's a combined assessment that, that yields your tax bill. We're getting the land tax off that now and, you know, after this were, were to be built, if we were fortunate enough to receive approval, you would get tax revenue not only from the land, which would probably be appreciated based on the sale price of that land, but also the, the building, which would be substantial. And yes, then there, there, I suspect there would be other personal property taxes that would apply just like any other business.
Other questions before we close the public hearing?
I understand this is still conceptual, but is there conceptual of how many units you are anticipating inside this building?
Yes, ma'am, I do have that number. I think it's actually in the staff report. I think it would be as, and it's, it's an estimate, so if not, since then, but an estimate of about 540 individual storage units within the building. And that can change, you know, as you get into, you know, pre-leasing and marketing of the property, you know, what the demand is, whether it's for larger units or smaller units or in-between, so that may change to some degree based on the ultimate marketing. But the expectation based on our experience is about 540 units, individual units.
Any more questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much for your consideration.
You're welcome. And would anybody else like to address the commission for this public hearing? If you know others, I'm going to close the public hearing and we can have questions, comments, concerns. I'm, I'm going to start off saying just a couple of, of things that are on my mind, good or bad. I know one of the big pieces of feedback that I get about the apartments for the legacy is just they are up against the road. It's just going to be this building just up against the road. And I know that this is just a conceptual site plan, but from what I see here, it's what I envision, and I see parking lot and building and. and pavement, and then fenced-in stormwater management areas with a fence around it. So when you're on the sidewalk, you see fence and pavement and building. I know that's all conceptual. I know that we can also put conditions if we wanted to say, hey, we need some trees for a buffer, some evergreens, some, some sort of, something along the property line. I also know that it is very impactful for the central district. That's a big impact to that central district, better or worse. Might be great impact, might be detrimental, depending on the eye of the holder. But it will change the face of the central district. And, and I really want to hear what my fellow commissioners think and what they say. But one thing is that there's only half of us here. And, and that's hard, because it's so important for me, when I'm looking at this, to hear different, different opinions and to hear what everybody has to say. And that's harder to do with half of us here. And, and.
I agree with what Angie's saying, and I'm, I'm thinking about some of the buildings that I personally am aware of, particularly in the city of Hampton, where these buildings like this have been built on the corners, for instance, Queen Street and Todd's Lane. And when you turn, it's like, what in the world is this? It's just so massive. Same way with apartments down at, down towards Buck Row. It's the same thing. They're, they're built right up on the street. And it's, it's just so massive that it's just, you lose that, I'm, I'm not sure, it's, it's just too massive in my mind. Both of those projects, if you were to drive by, see them, that's the way they look. You think, what in the world, what in the world is this? I am not opposed to units, storage units built on this property. I am not opposed to that at all. But what I am opposed to is this massive concrete building, and to repeat what Angie's saying, pavement and concrete, and it's massive. It runs basically from one side of that lot, those two lots, to the other. And I just think it's too, in my mind, it's just too massive a project for our main thoroughfare there.
I am, I'm thinking about that lot. It has been vacant for a very long time. Doesn't seem, at one time, I thought it was some issues. It seemed like it was some issue with the lot that prohibited it from being developed. And I, I can't remember exactly what it was. At times, it seemed like we had some discussion at one point.
There are wetlands behind there. I don't know if an environmental study's been done.
No, it wasn't anything but wetlands. It was something about the actual lot. I don't remember exactly. But, and then, of course, it has never been developed. And I kind of thought maybe that had something to do with it. It seemed like it was some discussion of it. And this has been many years ago. I can't recall what it was. But the appearance of the building, to me, it appears not, I guess, you know, the size maybe is probably what is the most controversial, shall we say. The appearance of it, honestly, I've got to be, I've got to be frank. It may not be taken well, I don't know. But the, the area there, which seems, has shifted to our business district. When I was growing up, it wasn't our business district. It was Pecosin Avenue in the middle of residential. This is where our business has shifted. We've got grocery stores there. We've got lots of businesses that are fairly large. We've got, you know, things that, this, this building front does kind of look like an office building. I mean, a large office building. Conceptual, I understand. It may, may be something different. I don't know. But at any rate, the conceptual has to comply with, with final requirements. He's right in, in the fact that it will, it will render our city some tax revenue. The vacant lot is sitting. I know everybody is concerned about their taxes. That's certainly, you know, of interest, I guess. But it's a, it's a relatively unobtrusive, if you think about it, unobtrusive business, because it's not like people are going to be coming and going continuously, say, for instance, of food or, you don't have people coming and going constantly, entering the roadway and exiting the roadway. That's one thing that I kind of like about it as a positive. It is a business area. I would say probably that some of the, it was long, they have a lot, will, will generate a lot more traffic. Hours, I think he stated, it'll close fairly early.
It's in the.
Nine to six, isn't it?
It's in the staff memo. It, it wasn't, it's not a 24-hour accessibility.
Right. Monday, nine to five. Saturday, 11 to four. So the hours are certainly better than a lot of the businesses there. It has some positives. I'm not completely negative on it. I'm, I'm kind of weighing the positives with the negatives here. I do see, I see some positives. Maximize a lot. It's only, it's an acre, I think, what is it, an acre, Thomas?
It's, it's a little over an acre and a half.
1.527 acres, which certainly is limiting to any business project there. It's somewhat limiting.
Well, it is practically covering that acre.
Yeah.
But it's like, it's massive.
Well, it is.
If you think of Food Lion, if you think of the shopping center, the line of the shopping center.
Right.
And put that up on the front of Wood Creek Road, that's what it would look like.
Most of it's parking.
I think it would be twice.
It's a parking, large parking area that's concrete in front of it, same, you know, same with Farm Fresh. I mean, if you think of it, it's concrete, right up to the road. It's back, it's not quite up on the road, but you have.
You have, you have a large part of the public page.
I, I don't know. It just seems to me that it is, it's sort of a limited place.
It's limitations for.
For business, say, if it is going to be developed into something.
Got a lot of uses there by right.
Yeah.
Used in a B2 zone. And as I said, I'm not a fan of storage units there at all. I mean, it's just the, I don't like that. It's so massive.
Massive.
I don't think it's going to be pleasing to, at all, coming down Wood Creek Road. And all of a sudden, you see this massive building here, and people are going to be, what in the world is that? Because, as Angie said, just like the apartments that have been moved closer to the road coming in, that's what you're going to see. You're going to see these massive apartment buildings right up against. I can tell you, in my opinion, it's not aesthetically pleasing. And I've seen a lot of them around where I work. And I think the immediate reaction is just like, holy cow, what in the world is that? It's just so, so massive. But I think, I appreciate what you have to say.
That's probably the, the only, that's the sticking point, I think.
Me, that is a sticking point.
Yeah. I have to agree. That's a sticking point for me, too. And that's just the nature of this lot. It's shallow. It's a lot of frontage to that road. So it isn't, it isn't removed from the road. You can't have this nice landscaping in front.
The footprint.
It's the face of the building. Yeah.
You feel the footprint of the building itself is, is.
Excessive, a lot, of course, which is kind of said.
And what is the frontage on that, all the way from one end to the other?
I, I'm not sure the exact dimensions of the, of the lot. You know, I do, Madam Chair, if you'll indulge me for a second, you know, I do want to note that if this was a permitted use, of course, you know, that's being approved by or they are be earlier would be, you know, permitted by right. And it could be a, a building of the nature as aesthetically pleasing or unpleasant as, you know, one's opinion is. And since you did mention the, the members, I do want to point out that the only member not here who will be here in December is Commissioner Stevens. So you are missing one, should you choose to postpone it. But I don't know. I don't know the exact frontage of that lot.
It's, it's, it's pretty significant. If you had, I don't know if you can scale it by that or not, but do, do we have anybody that would know that?
I, I can, Madam Chair, if that's something the board would like to know, I would kindly suggest that you take a short recess. I can, I can get you a, I can get you an idea of that. If that's something you want to do, you can, you can ask for a short recess. I'll get you an answer.
That would be great. We've been here an hour.
All right.
Okay. So I'm going to.
It won't take me more than two minutes.
Now, before, is there anything else that, if we're going to take a recess, any other pieces of information that you would?
I'd like to know the basic dimensions. I mean, it's pretty rectangular, except for that little jib on the back right corner. So the depth and the width is what I would like to know.
Okay. I don't know if this is possible, but I'm struggling with no definitive answer of height in comparison to everything else. Like, we have guestimates, like it might be as tall as Food Lion, or it might be way up to the townhouse behind it. Like, as we're talking about the massiveness of this structure, that height's going to play a big role in.
I, my, my gut feeling is, you know, maybe a comparable building be, well, far below, but probably not, I mean, certainly not to the peak of that, of that roof, because it's measured at a midline. You know, I think it's important to note that the.